The Lemmester City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
This is again a public hearing. Petition 5-23. David Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13 through 29 of revised ordinances entitled "Handicapped Parking Spaces" and add the following: Two reserved spaces on Summer Street closest to the entrance to Carter Park opposite 60 Summer Street. This was on our calendar at a 9:12 meeting. It was given further time on the 26th. Public hearing was held on September 26th at 6:50 p.m. And at this time, without objection, I would like to turn to one of the petitioners, Counselor Pauline Cormier. Perhaps you could give me an update on this petition?
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor. And I can summarize where we've gone since and perhaps our council president can fill in with whatever I missed. So on September 29th, Council President David Cormier, myself, Officer Robichaud, and Gail Turbide from the Disability Commission met over at the Carter Park to walk through the area and to look at the possibilities and what the challenges would be in putting on a handicapped parking on Summer Street. And after some debate and some walking through, we decided that there is a small lot that is on Main Street, and in that lot, there is 15 spots. And of those 15 spots, we're going to ask that four of those be designated as handicapped parking spots. That little, that small lot already exists. The four handicapped lots would actually be two handicapped lots for, spots for cars. The fourth would be, the third and fourth, it would actually be one, so it would be handicap van accessible. We did discuss the issues with putting handicapped parking on Summer Street. Part of the issue there becomes access getting inside the fence. Also, there is some housing in that area, and one of the fears was if there was designated handicapped parking spots there, that those could be utilized by any of the tenants, any of the residents, anybody in the city for that matter, would be able to utilize those spots. So what we've really come to is the idea of on Summer Street, and I see the, we're lucky to have the Office of Emergency Management here today because we're going to have to have a discussion with them eventually, where there is, basically Thursday nights throughout the summer months, we have the concerts in the park there, and there's other special events that happen. What we proposed doing at that point on those nights in particular is to have the entire section of Summer Street that abuts Carter Park blocked off. And this is where we would use the Office of Emergency Management if we could get some volunteers to block that section of the Summer Street off, so that that whole side of the street can be handicapped access. So it would be a section basically for the performers, the musicians, whatever they need to be able to park temporarily, get what they need to the gazebo and to the park area. And then they would have to park in another lot, and then that would open up the rest of Summer Street for exclusively handicapped parking. So although we cannot designate officially that those would be handicapped parking, we can make it so that special events, and they would, we would have to know ahead of time, obviously, and work through it with the Office of Emergency Management. And the Police Department agreed that they would help do it as well. Their fear had been if there was going to be, if they would have enough officers to do a detail like that. So we were going to impose on the Office of Emergency Management and see if they'd be willing to on the Thursday nights throughout the summer to do that and any other special events. I think that that was probably the best scenario we could come up with. The problem, one of the problems that the officer brought up were the cuts in the sidewalks as well. That would all have to be redone. And again, those parking spots would then be open up to anybody at any time, so that would cause more congestion, more issues in the Summer Street area. So I think we have some alternatives, and I'll turn it over to the President if you have anything else to add to summarize.
No, I think that's pretty much it. I mean, you know, after the discussion with Mr. Robichaud from the Police Department, you know, I think we sort of, and the Disability Commission agreed as well, it's probably the best course of action is to just eliminate parking on that side of the street and make it temporary handicap, which the Police Department has a right to do. So if they have a willingness to work with the Office of Emergency Management and we can come up with a plan that would work, you know, when you really stop and think about it, how many hours in an entire year do we need, you know, handicapped parking there? It's really very few. But when we need it, we need it, and otherwise, we don't. So if we can make this work, I think it's the best scenario for the neighborhood. It keeps all the parking free over there in terms of not having any specific designation, which I understand the Ward Two Counselor has not had a problem with. It's just during special events, which, you know, really are very limited to certain days of the week and certain months of the year. So I think after dealing with the Police Department, I think that's the best course of action is to give that a shot, because they're not too, they're not too amenable to having a permanent handicap parking situation on a public way over there, so.
Thank you both. I want to thank you. It sounds like you had a very fruitful meeting. A lot of thought went into this, and obviously Sergeant Robichaud was very helpful. You know, after the last, our last meeting on this, it dawned on me on my way home that the Ward Two Counselor had submitted a petition prior to handicap parking on a public way. And I forget the exact statute that Sergeant Robichaud stated, but it was prohibited. So we may have run into that on Summer Street as well. So I think this is a very creative way to address the issue. And before I ramble on, let me go to the council right after I go to the second member of Legal Affairs, Counsel Budanza.
So am I to stand then that the authors of this petition are going to refile? I mean, this doesn't look like an amendment to me. This looks like either, I guess more primally, is another petition required to do what you're planning to do?
No, no. The Police Chief, the Police Chief has the
Authority.
The authority to have a temporary no parking, temporary handicap parking, temporary, you know, whatever he or she needs to do, they have that authority. And so he's going to use that authority during special events over there and get a system that's going to work and
So this is, so this thing you're going to ask us to
Without prejudice.
Okay. Which I'd be fine with.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yeah, if I may, is there any change, are we going to have to change any ordinance regarding the four designated parking places on the Main Street, in the Main Street parking lot?
We already filed a petition for that. That's another petition that's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't
It's going to be a total of three spaces. Two are going to be regular handicapped, and then one is going to be a wheelchair van accessible, so it'll, there'll be, the fourth space will be all the lines, you know, so that a handicap wheelchair can roll out onto that area of the pavement.
All right, very good. Let me open it up to members of the council. Counsel Frida.
What was the reason specifically that the police said we couldn't use Summer Street?
The, Sergeant Robichaud, and you may be aware, recall that I had filed this to be able to have handicap spots to put on a public way. Basically, his explanation to us, and again, I'll ask the council president for a clarification if I don't get it quite right, was that what becomes the issue then is then anybody can petition to have handicap spots specifically in front of homes, on a public way, in front of homes, in front of certain businesses, anything else. And then it becomes an issue of enforcement and compliance. If they start to do it, then everybody's going to want one, and then part of their problem is going to be if, in the situation of the private residents that I discussed with him in the past, was that it was being done to help the person who lives there, but in reality, anybody could park there with a handicap placard at any time. So then it would become enforcement of that. His fear is that we'd be opening a can of worms by doing this. So that was a proposal that he brought up during those special occasions, when they have the special events there, to make that entire side of the street just handicap parking and block that off. They do have the authority to do that. So he thought that was a better use of the resources than that. And then that would be, they would be able to enforce it at that point, rather than if these start popping up on Summer Street, that they would, people would petition to do it everywhere, essentially.
Did they look at the possibility, and I know it'd have to go through the historical commission and board, but to designate maybe two on the land? I mean, that's, the four and across the street from the church isn't going to do anything. I mean, we drive in there when there's a memorial service, a veteran, veterans, older veterans cannot walk that to get to the veteran site. They can't walk it to get to the, you know. There should be a way that this city can come up with, with two spaces somewhere that isn't a half a mile away, that they can use, that they can have some type of parking availability.
And I agree with you. And we had that, we had that discussion that morning when we spoke with Sergeant Robichaud. He had discussed that as well. My understanding of it is, is the DPW in the city doesn't want anybody, any vehicles driving in that area at all. And I know the exact spot that you're talking about, when you get through the very back entrance. They don't want anybody, and they are looking to actually section that off, so there will be no access. It's supposed to be just for maintenance only. Their fear is the proximity of those parking places to the brick walkway, the memorial brick walkway, and they're afraid that opening up that access is going to do damage to that. And I understand, and I agree with you. I think that would be a perfect spot to be able to
I get it, but we're planning a rail, a rail trail right through the park. It's okay to bring bikes and everything else, but we can't take care of handicapped individuals? I mean, I'm not saying it's against your petition. I'm just saying that I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't do a little bit better, you know, with the city to come up with an idea to accommodate handicapped individuals that want to go to Carter Park. I mean, it's definitely an issue. And doing it with special events is great. I mean, they're going to be doing it five times a week during the summer. I mean, the Spanish Center has used the park for fears, and there are a lot of different things, and is somebody going to be telling them every time that there's an event, this is what they have to do? Contact the clerk or contact somebody to be able to provide for that? It just seems a little bit
I agree.
More of an issue than it should be.
It's not, it's not a perfect resolution to it. It's a suggestion to get us through that one part of it. And we discussed having meetings again when they do ask to continue the rail trail through there, what adjustments can be made at that point. But we were really looking for something to get them, because they had a miserable summer trying to host their, the concerts on Thursday nights. This at least addresses those times. So although it's not a perfect situation, at least we can work on that and then when, address it as the rest of it comes up. But I know the exact spot you're talking about, and I agree. It's, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be in the cards right now.
Anything further, Counsel?
What's that?
Counselor Brady, I noticed you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, just a quick observation. By putting a number of spots from that lot, we're going to have to be careful, because handicap spots require certain measurements, right? So the standard is eight by eight for van, but you can make it 11 by five. I'm just afraid if you put the petition in for four, and you don't have the space and have to take five, we're going to start it all over again.
Well
For the number of spaces, maybe you say, you know, what can fit?
They'll have to repaint all the lines to fit, you know? So at the end of the day, five spots that are there now might become three, because the three new ones will be wider, and then they'll repave, they'll repaint all the rest going down as well, to be the same size they are now and, you know, fall in line, so.
No, no, that was a, I think that's a good idea for Summer Street, doing the temporary. I mean, it's a quick fix, but it gets our most, you know, vulnerable population a quick place to get in and into the park.
Like I said, we agree, and we had that, you know, that same discussion there. I think that this is a temporary situation, that we can address it now, and then hopefully, when there are plans for the rail trail, whatever those plans are, we can make a more permanent solution over there. But at least this gets us past this hump, so.
Anyone else? I mean, I think that, if you recall, when I spoke at the mayor's office, I think they recorded this at our last meeting on this subject, Wendy Weeks, who obviously was successful in writing grants on top of this. If the rail trail, that section, of course, you know, until it's approved, it's not construction. But I thought the idea was that that's going to require some handicap access as well. So it may be funding associated with that, and it may be, that may be the opportunity to do this properly at the best access point. But I think as the Ward Two Counselor stated, we're starting, we're getting, you know, we're getting the camel's nose in the tent, so to speak, and I think this will be a work in progress. I really do. So what you had to work with, I thought you, you know, between the folks involved and Sergeant Robichaud, I thought you were very creative, and I thought you accomplished the mission that you were given, so. All right, let me see if there's anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 5-23. For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 5-23? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 5-23? Hearing done, I would declare the public hearing closed.
We have some 6:40 p.m. interviews. Is the chairwoman is ready to entertain those?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. If you'd like to, Ms. Bergeron, if you'd like to come forward and come within the bar here. My name is Pauline Cormier, and I am the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. The other committee members, actually, we are missing the clerk of the Ways and Means, Counsel Arndinger, but the other, the third member of the committee is sitting directly across from me, the Counselor Todd Deacon. We want to welcome you to the City Council chambers. If you would introduce yourselves to the, for any of the audience that doesn't know who you are.
Certainly. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Arthur Elbethal, and here in my capacity as the Director of Emergency Management. And I wish to introduce to you this evening Ms. Shang Bergeron and her daughter Elizabeth. And we are joined also with her sister, May. And Ms. Bergeron is interested in joining Lemmester Emergency Management. She has submitted an application, and we have reviewed her. She has also passed a background check, including a CORY check, and we fully endorse her application to be a member here of Emergency Management. In her resume, she has spent many years as a teacher and also in a part-time career in health and wellness. These are both areas that we're interested in. And looking back to our meeting two weeks ago, when we spoke about sort of expanding and teaching short classes that we're calling the Lemmester Lifesaver Program. So teachers and experienced teachers that are both interested and skilled in instruction are very valuable to us. Ms. Bergeron, I believe, is going to be very valuable to the future of our department.
Thank you. Ms. Bergeron, good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I was, I grew up in Pittsburgh, and so we've recently moved back to Massachusetts, and I feel like my life goal is to kind of give back to our community, because growing up, we had a lot of people in our community give back to us, and they were complete strangers, and they're willing to help people who needed a helping hand. And so I feel like my job is to give back, and I want to teach that to my girls, too. And sorry. We've volunteered for other public service departments, and my girls, I have two, Laurel, she's 10, and Elizabeth is eight, they've volunteered with me for the past six years. And so they come volunteer with me with tasks that are age-appropriate for them. So they'll come and hand out candies to nursing homes, they'll sing Christmas carols at the nursing homes, they'll help the Police Department at Community Days. And so I just want to kind of teach my girls and show everybody else in the world that it doesn't cost you any money to be kind and to be helpful to other people.
Thank you. What does, what specific talents do you, will you bring to the Office of Emergency Management?
Well, I feel like I'm very skilled at managing multiple different tasks at the same time, because I homeschool my girls, I've taught in a public classroom, I've taught in private classrooms, I've worked with and taught adults. So I've had experience with teaching between the ages of, or at least starting from infants all the way up to 70 and 80-year-olds in fitness. I used to coach CrossFit also, so I've worked in the public school system, and I've worked in private health and wellness sector.
That's the questions that I have. I'm going to open it up for the rest of the council. Counselor Deacon?
Thank you for coming tonight. What other, what other talents that you can bring forward to the organization to make them stronger?
That's a tough one, because I feel like I'm very adaptable, so I'm able to just kind of take a task and run with it and do what it takes to get it done. Because that's life with parenting, I feel like, and running a classroom with 25 students. You kind of get things thrown at you, and you have to figure it out and just get the task done. And I feel like I'm very flexible and resourceful, and so I'm able to just take what I have and use it and get the task done.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming forward and applying for the job, and your volunteerism, and I think you're a great role model to your daughters, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor?
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. First of all, let me say, correct that, we've done a little behind most candidates in recruiting schools, but second to none. And I have no questions for the candidate for opening statement, since the emotion and sincerity and welcome aboard, and I'm sure to be a great asset to the public emergency management here in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions, so we will end the interview here. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
I will, if you'd like to stay, I will ask our president if we can move up the appointments on the, on the calendar, on the agenda for this evening. If not, we will let you know, but we'd be happy to have you stay for the vote.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you heard earlier, we're going to be seeking your services.
Oh, yes, certainly, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, the time is now seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting for the Lemmester City Council to order for October 11th, 2022. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
At Pledge of Allegiance City Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
I am now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemmester City Council, beginning with Counsel Budanza.
Present.
Counsel Cormier.
Present.
Counsel Angelini.
Present.
Counsel Brady.
Present.
Counsel Deacon.
Present.
Counsel Frida.
Present.
And I am present. There are seven members present this evening. Does the Vice President have any records to approve this evening?
I do. Mr. President, I reviewed the minutes of the last meeting, and if there is no objection or no corrections, I find them to be in good standing, and I ask them to be placed on record.
Okay, if there's no objections, then we will counsel Frida.
It's not an objection. I just noticed that it wasn't in the minutes that I requested an explanation of the opioid funding at the last meeting. And I know we do have it now, but I'd just like to see that in there.
Sure, we can take your questions, thank you.
Is there anything else that anybody had any questions or concerns about? If not, then we will put the minutes of September 26th, 2022 on file, and that bit of information that was requested will be added as well. And at this point, I'd ask to some, to entertain a motion for recess. Counsel Budanza, do you have a second? Second, Counsel Frida. All those in favor of going into recess signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, we are now in recess. And does the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to do the other two interviews?
Yes, we have two more interviews, Josh Bowdrich and Stephanie Quinlan. And Madam Kirk, do we know?
I ran into Josh on the way in. They have a meeting upstairs right now.
Okay.
He's on a temporary appointment.
Oh, oh, so that's a problem, okay. We'll have to reschedule.
We can reschedule to 10:24, if that's modifiable.
Yes.
He's on it yet?
Temporarily.
He's on it already?
I was in a way, I guess, according to Counsel Brady, the mayor must have given him a temporary appointment, so
Emergency, yeah.
So he's up there now in a meeting.
Okay. So perhaps we can schedule, reschedule both these interviews to 10:24?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to them, and I think it's going to be around 6:40.
We can vote on that during the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm assuming that's where Stephanie is as well, so.
Yes.
Okay, so we will, we will move on then to the public hearing that was scheduled for 7:45 PM, 7-23, Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. I think the clerk needs to check that, because if, if, he's sitting on the Conservation Commission without an appointment.
So they did get temporary emergency appointments from the mayor's office recently.
Do we have it? Did we get a notice to that effect?
It was in the mailbox. It should have been into the mailbox.
I don't have it here.
Okay. I can grab it for you. It just happened last week on Friday evening. One of their members got COVID, and they wasn't, they weren't going to have a quorum. So that's how they handled it.
Okay. 7-23, public hearing.
Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. Petition 7-23. Joseph A. Quinn, Sealer of Weights and Measures, requests to amend the City of Lemmister Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, by updating the content of Article 10, Inspector of Weights and Measures. This request includes updating the ordinance in the fee schedule. A recommended ordinance and fee schedule has been approved by the mayor and has been submitted to the city council. The reason for this petition is that the current ordinance is outdated and needs to be updated. The current ordinance was last updated with significant changes in 1960. The fee schedule had minor changes periodically over the years. We have Mr. Quinn with us this evening, and I'd like to invite him into the chambers at this point, without objection. Mr. Quinn, what I think I'd like to do is read in the red line changes that you proposed, and then, I know that the council clerk assured me that the council has the red line copied. And then following that, I'd like you to make your opening statement, and then the council can follow up with any questions they may have for you.
Certainly.
Thank you. So this is the City of Lemmister Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 10, Inspector of Weights and Measures, Section 2-39, Appointment. And what I'll do, what I'd like to do is, I will read this paragraph, and then we're going to go into almost an entire section that is new, then we'll have the fee schedule. So again, this is Section 2 to 39, Appointment. On and before the first Monday of February, in each year that a vacancy exists, the mayor shall appoint, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 98, Section 34 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and subject to confirmation by the city council, an inspector of weights and measures, also known as the sealer of weights and measures. And may appoint one or more deputies to act under the direction of the inspector. The appointed term will continue until resignation, retirement, or removal. Upon the completion of said, the said term, the position is to be filled by mayoral, by mayoral appointment, excuse me, as stated in Section 2.3 of the Lemmister Home Rule Charter, or if appointment is not made at the completion of the term, the position is considered vacant and must be filled by temporary appointment, as defined by Section 2.5 of the Lemmister Home Rule Charter. Part-time municipal employees serving as inspectors or sealers of weights and measures and any deputies are exempt from the civil service law and rules in Mass. General Law, Chapter 31, unless expressly made subject thereto by statute. Appointees are supervised by the Director of Public Health. Then we go on to Section 2-40, Duties Generally. The inspector of weights and measures and deputies shall, A, enforce all Massachusetts laws relative to the use of weights and measures, the giving or use of false weights or measures, inaccurate consumer pricing. This includes portions or the entirety of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 6, Chapter 94, Chapter 98, Chapter 99, and Chapter 101. Along with the related Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, CMR. B, provide the owner or authorized agent of device or devices sealed with a certificate stating the name and address of the business, number and type of devices sealed or inspected, the date when sealed, approved or condemned, and the amount of the fee charged collected. C, collect all fees and charges by which Massachusetts Law, Chapter 98, and Chapter 40, is allowed to receive, pay this, excuse me, pay to the city treasurer monthly all such sums, and furnish the city comptroller with a duplicate statement of such account. D, have the custody of all city weights and measures feel standards and maintain an operational condition. Ensure that the city field standard test equipment is certified as accurate by the state metrologist in accordance with the required schedule. E, the inspector and all deputies shall be certified by the state certification committee within one year after assuming their powers and duties. The inspector and all deputies shall obtain a certificate of qualification in required additional disciplines beyond the basic certification as soon as possible. The inspector and any deputy inspectors shall participate in continuing education programs to maintain professional certification. Section 2-41, Compensation. The inspector of weights and measures and all deputies, and I'm sorry, and any deputies shall receive Level S-6 salary modified for part-time employment, allowance for transportation if required, and other necessary expenses as the mayor and city council may determine. Section 2-42, Office Hours. The office of the inspector of weights and measures shall be open by appointment only. Now we'll go on to Section 2-41, 2-42.1, Fee Schedule. Inspector of Weights and Measures Fee Schedule. Balances and scales, over 10,000 pounds, $150. Over, I'm sorry, five to 10,000 pounds, $60. 1,000 to 5,000 pounds, it's been changed from 40 and increased by $10 to 50. Weights of 100 to 1,000 pounds was 30, this would, it would become 40. Weights 10 to 100 pounds was $15, it will be increased to $20. 10 pounds or less was $15, it's going to $20. Metric set was $15, going to $20. Apothecary set was 15, going to $20. Troy set was 15, going to $20. Capacity measurers, vehicle tanks, $100. Each indicator, $25. Each 100 gallon or percentage, $25. Liquid, 1 gallon or less, was $10, going to $20. Liquid, more than 1 gallon, was $15, will go to $20. Liquid measuring meters, oil grease, was $15, will become $20. Gasoline, $20. Vehicle tank pump was $60, it will become $70. Vehicle tank gravity, $100. Bulk storage was $50, will be going to $100. Other device, devices, leather measure semi-annual, oh, $20 from $10. Water dispenser, $20. Retail scanners, 1 POS, 2 to 3, I'm sorry, 1 POS would be 50, 2 to 3 would be $100, 4 to 11 would be $200, and 12 plus would be $250. Taximeter, $50. Odometer, this one's being reduced, it was 30, it's going to 25. GPS transport measurement system was 25, proposed to be 50. Electric vehicle charging systems, $20, excuse me. Carpet, carpet or fabric measure, $20, it was 10. Wire rope cord, it's going from 10 to $20. Timing, 0 to 10 minutes, $10. That was 0. 10, 10 minutes to 30 minutes, $20 from 15, and 30 minutes plus would go to 25. Linear measurements, measurers, I'm sorry, yardsticks, $15. Tapes, $15. End measures, $15. Miscellaneous, milk jars per gross was 25, it will become 50 if this is adopted. Dry measures, $15. Bottle return, reverse vending, was 0, that would become $15. Wood bark measures, $25. Sand and lome measures, $25. Coin counters, was 0, would be going to $15. Motor fuel blender was $10, and it will stay at $10. Adjusting, $25. Reinspection, retest or reseal would be going to $25. Non-resident surcharge, $25. Special facilities, special equipment, $25, or cost, and apparently that was 0 as well. And repairs are listed as cost, but no change in that last one. So at this time, let me turn it over to Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilor. Good evening, City Councilors. Thank you very much for your time. I come before you this evening to speak in favor of 7-23. The packet you have received has a variety of information supporting this petition, such as a comparison of fees charged in other communities, 2021 Weights and Measures Annual Report, plus Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 98, and Chapter 40, fee information. Lemmister has had an inspector or sealer of weights and measures since 7 July 1740. This department is the smallest of the city departments, which impacts hundreds of millions of dollars in commerce each year. Updating the Weights and Measures ordinance is long overdue, as it was last done with significant changes in 1960, with some provisions set in place for a full-time inspector, which we've never had. Updating this ordinance has been on my to-do list for many years. The current ordinance is vague and does not provide clear guidance on appointing, operating, or managing the Weights and Measures program as currently configured. Some information is significantly outdated, such as references to public scales and hay scales, plus requiring set office hours. The recommended ordinance before you today provides clear appointment guidance, added operational detail, and is more consistent with how the part-time Weights and Measures program is currently conducted here in Lemmister. It is further aligned with the Massachusetts General Laws, which Weights and Measures officials are legally tasked to enforce. This recommended ordinance includes verbiage on deputy inspectors, adds a statement on supervision, is clear on compensation, and inserts sealer of weights and measures, which is what the inspector of weights and measures is within the Massachusetts General Laws. Fees are established to pay for the entire Weights and Measures program, which would be too costly to businesses. They are simply included to offset some of the cost. The cost of the program is shared by the taxpayers and the business owners, as both groups benefit from the program. Taxpayers pay for the program, and businesses pay sealing or inspection fees that ultimately come back to the city as free cash to be used as needed. This updated fee schedule removes some obsolete devices and adds a few new devices. It also changes some of the fees with minor increases. In closing, hopefully you have provided enough information and answered any questions that you may have. Thank you for this opportunity to furnish you with additional details of this petition. Please support this requested ordinance and fee schedule update.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Before I go, remember, the members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I also want to state the record that you did ask and receive a referral from the Board of Health, and Michelle Powell wrote, "Looks good, offset." So I take that as a ring endorsement, Mr. Quinn. Let me go to the second member, if I may, of Legal Affairs, Council Badanza.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your efforts in this regard, continuing to update some of our ordinances. This one included Joe. Thank you for all your efforts, both on behalf of the department as well as this update. As indicated, I do believe it's long overdue, and I will be happy to support this tonight.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I have no questions, Joe. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for spelling all this out. And Councilor Angelini, well done. I think this is well overdue, and, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to update this and get this done. Thank you.
Let me open it up to the council. Councilor Frida?
Must be something about your background, your protocol and your professionalism in bringing this forward was right to the T on every single T that was crossed and I that was dotted, so I'm happy to support this as well.
Any of the council like to weigh in? Well, thank you. At that, at this time, I know you have, let me go to the public. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 7-23? Hearing done, we declare this public hearing closed. I thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Perfect.
For your presence this evening and your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now our final hearing, which was scheduled for 6:50 PM on 6-23, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, indeed, Mr. President. Thank you. Petition 6-23. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. Elizabeth Wood, explaining director, on behalf of the Plaining Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. This would provide a letter as well. Would you, this witness, Mr. Chacony, indicate his right of due? Oh, thank you. Just give me one minute.
I'm sorry, petition seven dash twenty-three. For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition seven dash twenty-three?
I'll speak. I know Mr. Quinn, I know the job he does.
The person you're calling, please, and state your name.
Sal Chaconi, four twenty-eight Union Street, Lemmester. I would support anything this man does. He is thorough, he is excellent at what he does, and he is a benefit to our community, so I'm in total support.
Thank you, Mr. Chaconi. For the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition seven dash twenty-three? Hearing done, I declare this public hearing closed. I thank you, Mr. Quinn, for your presence this evening and your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now our final hearing, which was scheduled for six fifty PM on six dash twenty-three. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, indeed, Mr. President. Thank you. Petition six dash twenty-three. Uh, this is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. This would provide a letter as well. Would you, Mr. Chaconi, indicate his address here?
Oh, thank you. Just give me one minute.
I know, I know. I'm not loud enough without it.
The Legal Affairs Committee is in receipt of a letter dated September seventh, two thousand twenty-two. RE petition to City Council for zoning amendment pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Attention, City Council. On eight twenty-two twenty-two, the Planning Board voted seven to zero to petition the City Council for a zoning amendment pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. About a year ago, a prior petition was brought forth to the City Council on this matter. The petition was withdrawn by the City Council. The petition is being resubmitted with edits from the original version. This topic for petition originally transpired when it was brought to the Planning Board's attention that there are places in the city that are being used as overflow lots for tow yards or for car dealerships for unregistered vehicles. This is not desired. This is not to be confused with the licensed car dealerships themselves, as these are permitted in designated amount of unregistered vehicles on their dealership lots. The goal of the proposed zoning amendments to the use chart within the zoning regulations is to create a space for parking areas for unregistered vehicles to exist, but only in the industrial zone, in commercial zone, with a special permit and site plan approval from the Planning Board. Also presented are definitions for tow yard and for vehicle storage lot. In addition to the Planning Board working to provide you with the current draft proposal, the Board consulted with a subcommittee comprised of the Chairman of the Licensing Commission, a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Commissioner, the Health Director, the Conservation Agent, the Planning and Development Director, and a property owner. Please review the draft amendment, consider making an amendment to zoning. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. And copied on this were Dean Mazurola, Mayor, Peter Nail, Building Official, Michelle Powell, interim Health Director, Michelle Hagstrom, ZBA Member, James Kelly, Chair of the License Commission, Nick Crump, Conservation Agent, Nicholas Pura the Third. Good evening. Ms. Wood, would you like to begin?
Sure. I think, good evening, Counsel. Thank you for having us, and thank you for considering this petition. Uh, I want to start by saying it came to my department's attention originally from Mayor's Office that there were areas in town that were being used to park, um, park many, um, or large amounts of unregistered vehicles. And, um, we were asked to find a way to address it within our zoning ordinance. There is a city code that, um, regulates unregistered vehicles that allows one vehicle to be parked in, um, in any property, and, um, there are enforcement issues. Um, it's a challenge for the city to enforce that at present. But what this would do would be to allow for the use of parking of unregistered vehicles, but with some restrictions and with, um, some parameters to mitigate the impacts of those properties on abutting properties. And, um, one of those, um, mitigation, um, items would be to provide screening from abutting properties, um, either in the form of landscaping or fencing, and to have security fencing. And then the other item would be to allow proper lighting to, um, ensure safety of these areas. And, um, this would be restricted, as it said in my letter, only to the commercial zone and the industrial zone, and it wouldn't be allowed in all areas of the city, but it would, um, have an opportunity for it to exist within those zones. Um, we went through extensive, extensive, um, research on this and committees, committee work. We got opinions, as it said in there, from, um, various folks, as you read in the letter, and we had probably, I would say, three committee meetings. It went back and forth between the committee and the Planning Board, so the Planning Board would review it and then go back to the committee. This was in the, um, going back a year to the original petition. And eventually it evolved, after the original petition was withdrawn, it evolved into what you have in front of you today with the two definitions and the use chart. And, uh, Mr. Chaconi of the Planning Board was with me throughout this process, um, along with the rest of the board, but he spearheaded it, um, coming to work with me personally in my office, and then with the subcommittee that, um, we mentioned prior.
This, this, I defer to the gentleman who's been in, probably spent more time in room ten than the other individual on the planet.
I'm probably gonna have my wake in that room. This, in, in my thirty-four years, is the first time that, uh, we put a meeting together with all the different department heads because we valued their opinion and what they had to bring to the table about what was going on. Now, I know a lot, well, you're probably all aware, of some of the situations we have in the city. I myself continue to ride the city and check things to see, um, where we are. But when you see three, uh, car carrier trucks come dropping off cars from the Acton Auto Auction to the same location that already has a hundred cars in it, uh, that's a problem. And they stay there forever. I even go take pictures to see how long they stay, because they're supposed to rotate out. They don't rotate out as quickly as they tell us they rotate out. Some of these areas are environmentally, uh, areas that we should be concerned with. They abut water, they abut some of our natural resources. In nineteen seventy-three, the Clean Waters Act cleaned up the Nashua River, the Merrimack River, the Charles River, and did such a wonderful job that these are great recreational places now. Well, what happens when you park cars on an impervious, not an impervious surface, a surface that's gonna allow runoff into our natural resources? So I had some problems with that. It has been an interesting few months. We had some interesting issues with some of the, uh, people that didn't want to be regulated at all, and I'm the last one to really enforce regulations, but when something's wrong, it's wrong. And we've all seen it. We've seen it in other areas where someone might lease out a lot, and it might be a residential or A or Residence B, and all of a sudden you got twenty-five cars in there. Or you got junk in there. You might see it in an old contractor yard that's licensed and has certain rights, but not rights to have fifty cars, you know, that are leaking into, uh, into our soils or that are causing issues, that just stay there forever. So this is an attempt to control some of that. It isn't gonna control everything, because people are still gonna hide things, you know, on personal property, which they've been doing since I was a kid. We would just like to clean this up a little bit and have a little bit more authority, or give the inspector a little bit more of authority to go in and correct a lot of these activities. I've been threatened, I've been kicked out of places, um, and I've, you know, I thought I was gonna have some issues with some people at certain points and times when I go around to check. And tonight, on the way home, I'll go around to certain places and check as well. It's just such an interesting thing that I never knew existed as badly as it exists until I started looking into it myself. So it's something that we need to do something about. We don't want to hurt business, we don't want to over-regulate anything, but we need to get some parameters around this to make it, to make it good for the city, because it, it's just happening more and more. Now, it all started with, uh, a meeting with the License Commission. The License Commission has certain rights. And, you know, the nice thing about working with other departments is that we learn a lot from each other. There were things that I learned that I'd never knew, you know, who had this responsibility, this, License Commission regulates, you know, your used car dealerships, your, your car dealerships. The state regulates the junkyards. And there are all different, you know, things that go along with that. I think we need to do something, I think it's spelled out pretty well here. Security fencing, lighting, not, uh, not a problem to abudders, and, uh, we would like this petition to move forward.
I think that's a perfect opportunity for me to segue into the language.
I figured.
I can share that with the counsel and the public. Okay, so Section twenty-two dash four definitions. Tow yard. An outdoor storage facility for the temporary storage of towed vehicles. Does not include disposal, permanent disassembly, salvage, or accessory storage of inoperable vehicles. Requires yard security fencing, proper lighting, and screening from abutting properties. Screening may be in the form of a, of privacy fencing or landscape design. This area would be considered a parking lot. Vehicle storage lot. Any city lot or parcel used for the storage of unregistered vehicles, such as a tow yard, vehicle overflow lot, repair facility, or any other purpose. Requires yard security fencing, proper lighting, and screening from abutting properties. Screening may be in the form of privacy fencing or landscape design. This area would be considered a parking lot. And then under Section twenty-two dash seventeen, underlying district's table of uses, transportation uses. We would be adding vehicle overflow lots. Not allowed in rural residential, not allowed in Residence A, not allowed in Residence B, not allowed in Residence C, not allowed in Business A, not allowed in Business B. Uh, special permit from the Planning Board for Business C.
For commercial, right?
For commercial, I'm sorry. Industrial, special permit from the Planning Board with site plan approval. And I'm sorry, the same for commercial that requires site plan approval as well as a special permit from the Planning Board. And of course, it's not allowed in MU one, MU two, or Zone B, Village District. So, uh, tow yard would be a resident, uh, RR, no. Residence A, no. Residence B, no. Residence C, no. BA, no. BB, no. Uh, commercial, again, special permit from the Planning Board as well as site plan approval. Industrial would be a special permit from the Planning Board, again, and site plan approval, and it would not be allowed in MU one, MU two, or the Village District.
Yeah.
Did I convey that accurately?
You did. Uh, we would like to make one edit to that. Um, instead of vehicle overflow lot, it would be vehicle storage lot.
In the chart?
In the, in the, yeah, in the use chart.
Well, we have vehicle overflow lot now. You want to change that?
Correct.
To vehicle storage lot?
To match the definition.
Yes. The licensing, I don't know, um, you know, the licensing board, especially for used car dealerships, or especially for mechanic shops, they allow a certain number. They petition for certain numbers of vehicles that they fix and sell, and some site might have ten, uh, that they can store in their license with the License Commission, but you got twenty-five sitting there, uh, that never move. Um, we see this over and over again in a lot of places. If anybody remembered the lot that was next to the old Lemmester Motel across the street on Route twelve, that was a real problem. That business was, was put in play, and it was before us to have so many parking spots, and that was at the location, and that was it. All of a sudden, they created another lot, and it was no supposed to be any cross-traffic across Route twelve, and that became a problem, and that was dealt with. But the inspector lacks the teeth to go into some of these industrial areas that are leasing out some of the land to people that use it just for these purposes. Uh, we have businesses from out of state that are leaving cars there because they say they can't get them back from the auction quick enough, because they only have one truck. Well, I disagree with that, because I go down and take the pictures and see how many trucks come in and out, and what they drive when they come in. So there's all these little nuances that happen, and we could say the same in some of the residential areas. Some of the, all the residential areas that have mechanic shops also have, uh, backyards that are fenced in filled with junk cars. So we have that. It's just getting our arms around this and trying to put some control to it, and trying to put some bite into the enforcement of it.
All right, let me, let me try to do a little housekeeping here. Madam clerk? I believe, um, that we had asked for referrals from the Building Department and the License Commission?
Correct.
Have you seen either of those?
For this particular six twenty-three.
Six dash twenty-three.
Yeah, so, no, for neither, either.
All right. Because when we're talking, when you mention enforcement, obviously, I'd like to, I know.
Absolutely.
I can remind them both. I can remind both of them, because I know we've received other ones from Building Department on newer items, so I don't know if it got lost in the shuffle.
I think that would be helpful. So, let me, let me, if I may, excuse me, let me go to members of Legal Affairs here first, and then I will go to the counsel, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have some questions for you. Second member of Legal Affairs, Counsel, Counselor Bedanza, do you have anything?
I do. First of all, um, on a language matter, the word disassembly, I don't think is what you intend there. Disassembly means to put on a false appearance by pretense. I, I don't think that's what was intended there. I think you probably want the word disassembly.
We forgot the A.
Yeah. Look, obviously, this is a problem. It's been a problem for a long time. I have no difficulty with the spirit of this, and thank you for all the effort you put into it, especially with the committee. My one observation about this, and I'm not sure how you address it, is you've got the word temporary. Obviously, the, the tow yard is a much more narrow, um, operation than the vehicle storage lot, which subsumes a tow lot and a lot of other things. The tow lot is meant, the tow yard is meant to be something much, much more specific, and the use of the word temporary with no definition is gonna be kind of difficult to enforce. I, I, I know of car, lots that have towed cars in that have stayed there for decades. And as you've already pointed out in your presentation, some of these repair places that have tow operations can click, quickly morph into yards where there are many, many vehicles. There used to be one on Lancaster Street that had a whole host of vehicles stored outside, and through enforcement action, it was cleaned up. I got involved in one years ago as a city solicitor, uh, over on Route twelve. I guess, as you condition these things.
To strike, temporary.
What's that?
We could strike temporary. You know, Counsel, not to interrupt, but according to my conversations with the License Commission, tow yards are regulated by the state as well, so there's a whole series of other, uh, things that they have to comply with.
I don't have a problem with the word temporary being there.
Right.
I just think, you know, when you go to condition these things on a special permit, you're gonna, I think your conditions ought to get very specific as to what that means. I mean, you have some authority when you go to, when this comes before you for a special permit. I think you have some authority to condition these things. I think that, that may be the way it goes, but the, the spirit of it, I, I think it makes sense. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I, I agree with Counselor Bedanza. I agree with the spirit of this. And it, it's something that needs to be addressed. We have one right on Mechanic Street here in town that's forever. I do have a question as to... One of the issues that we have throughout the city is enforcement. And which department is going to enforce, and who has the manpower to enforce? So that's my question, is where this, where does, is the enforcement coming from? And are you having different departments saying, well, no, that's really licensing, no, that's really...
No. Actually, we didn't have any of that. You know, licensing would like to have, you know, licensing has the enforcement power for things that they regulate. Used dealerships, regular car dealerships, they would like to have some authority around overflow lots. But that falls on the building inspector. And as I've said at our annual meeting earlier this past year, we have a real problem with the lack of enforcement officers to deal with a lot of our issues. Whether it's actual build-outs according to what the plan stated, according to what the conditions were on the plan, to, you know, things like this. So we are light on the enforcement side. It wouldn't be a bad thing, you know, to have some extra people there, whether it's part-time or whether it's on-call. But there is a problem. Building would take care of the piece for us, and then the piece that comes under the License Commission, they self-regulate and they enforce their own. But they're really kind of limited in what they can do. You know, they can go to the mechanic shop that has 25 cars there with a license for five and, and, you know, enforce, you only have five here, you have to either get rid of these or come in and reapply for extra spaces or extra licenses. That's not in our department, that has nothing to do with us. Actually, when this all first started, I didn't think it had anything to do with us. But it ended up that it did have a lot to do with us. But it would be the building inspector for, for the planning board piece.
After, after the site plan approval.
After the site plan approval.
And the special permit.
Correct.
We would have it in writing and on file, what the agreement is, and it would be up to the building official to enforce it after that.
And here's another question that was raised, that I raised. If you have, you know, a license for so many and nobody ever enforces it, they just add more. They add more, they add more. It really is, when you go out there and you run around and you look at this, it's, it's really, it's, it's in every ward, it's everywhere in the city.
How are other communities dealing with this?
We didn't find a lot. We invented, we came up with this one on our own for Lemmister.
Right.
We didn't find a lot in other communities.
I have nothing for it, thank you.
Let me open it up to the rest of the council. Councilor Frieda.
I think the Ward 2 Councilor hit the nail on the head. I think this has gotten to this point because we haven't had enforcement.
Yes.
And if the proper enforcement officer is not enforcing, then I, I've said it many times down here, we really need an enforcement officer in a whole separate position in this city because things aren't being addressed. Then it gets to a point where I know people have complained to the planning board because of some of the issues, not just this, other issues as well. And there's nothing you can do once it leaves the planning board, then it's, it's up to the building inspector to enforce. And if the enforcement isn't done, I've, I've had discussions about that. And if you, if it's not going to happen, we're gonna, this is going to be the beginning of a number of issues to address because there are people in the city doing what they're supposed to do and following the rules, following the laws. And I think that goes back to, you know, comments, Sal, about nobody's trying to hurt business in the city. But when you have somebody abusing those, those laws and those rights, and you can't get any enforcement of it, then it presents a bigger problem. And I, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to deal with it.
And Council, some people have, have issues around revenue loss to the city as far as business revenue because you have the companies that come in and out, specifically the ones that are dealing with the auto auctions. You know, they're in and out, they're only going to keep them here for a week until they can move them to their site out of state, but it's not a week. So there are issues around that which don't come under us, that would come under the Licensing Commission as well, or it would come under our yard purview. We, we put this forward, we know it may need some changes, but we wanted to put this to your body so that you could take a good look at it and you could add the things that would, would initiate a proper ordinance for us to have.
Well, I think somebody's got to be able to do something because I, I see it even in Ward 3 now. I go by it every day, and there's another 10 cars and another 20 cars, and now that's on the lawns. It, it's surrounding buildings, it's, it's really spoiling the, the looks and it's, Route 12 is the main road coming in, you know, to our city. And, and the mayor has such a, a strong desire to have the city looking perfect, you know, with flowers and, and cleanliness all the time, that it's, that's the first thing that catches your eye when you, when you come down Route 12 now. So, and I know there are other areas, but I, I think something's got to be done with it, I agree. I'm all good.
Councilor Brady.
I've been patient.
You always are.
Councilor Frieda always seems to beat you by a...
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. It, it actually has to do what my esteemed colleagues have brought up. One, I'm wondering, who is the chief enforcement officer? Is it, you had mentioned building inspector, but we also have a building commissioner.
It's the same.
Same.
Were you saying the word inspector, but what you mean the commissioner?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, from what I'm hearing, it's, it's a whole combination of people doing what they want, lack of enforcement, lack of a single board. So I think this needs to be addressed, and it's always been my permission, position that, you know, we have a License Commission, if you have a license, everything should go through them.
Well, there's also, you know, Council, we had, I had a conversation with the License Commission to say before somebody would come forward to the planning board for a special permit or a site plan approval for whether it was a used dealership, especially in the case of a used dealership or a new car dealership. You know, one of the questions we should be asking is, have you been to the License Board and have you obtained a license, and what's the license for? Because that gives us the information we need, you know, to look at the site plan approval in an intelligent way. But we have never done that. We never knew each other's roles, which was a nice thing that came out of the subcommittee meeting. And then I did bring in a, a citizen of Lemmister who was involved in the business and, you know, to, to make sure we didn't hurt the businesses. And he happens to be doing it right in his location, but some of the associated locations don't do it right. So you have very, you have a few that play by the rules, but a lot that don't, more so that don't.
Just to follow up, if this seems to be an ongoing issue, then we, we're going to have to send a letter to the mayor and ask for some, maybe counseling to the building commissioner in order to get some enforcement?
Well, I certainly would like to, we don't have a recommendation from the building inspector that we ask for, nor do we have correspondence from the License Commission. Myself, I think this matter in particular would require more than a letter. I would like to actually have the building inspector sitting there, or, you know.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. And be able to ask him a myriad of questions that are arising. Because otherwise, we'd be passing this in vain, quite frankly.
No, I, I think you're dead on. I had them in my meetings. I think you're, you're spot on with having certain people in here besides us.
To the council president, do we have the authority to ask for that, or do we have to go through the mayor?
I'm sorry, for what?
To interview the building commissioner.
We could take a vote to have him come down.
Yeah.
And, and license as well, so that you can get the feel for where the disconnect is between the two and what their enforcement problems are.
Yeah, makes sense. Councilor David Cormier.
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, thank you very much for all your efforts in putting this petition forward. And the, the second I saw this petition, one place came to mind, which is a place that Councilor Frieda had mentioned. And I have, I can't even tell you the phone calls and emails and the going back and forth for years with the neighbor and all the nonsense. But, you know, everybody's right. I mean, you know, we, we can pass any laws we want, but if, if we're not going to have the enforcement, you know, if nobody's going to put any effort in to enforce them, then they're no good. I mean, so that is a very important piece that I want to understand. You know, as, as the chairman mentioned about doing this in vain, I, I don't want to do that, I want to make sure that, you know, that we, that this has some teeth to it if we're going to pass something. We're gonna, we're gonna put something on the books and tell our constituents that, yep, we're gonna do something about this now, then, and spend all kinds of money to advertise this in the newspaper and go through all these motions to have a law. I want to know that it's good.
Absolutely.
But it is a problem, you know, all over the city. And I thank you very much once again for all the efforts that you put in to look into this and to try to...
Plan and direct a lot of effort here.
To try to make things better because it's definitely much needed, but we need the enforcement too, I can't stress that enough. Thank you.
And as a housekeeping matter, we have this scheduled for October 17th as a public hearing with the planning board. October, did I say November?
No, you said October.
Okay. No, it's October. It's scheduled next Monday.
The other two items, or this?
This item.
Oh, I thought, I thought this was passed by the planning boards.
It was passed to send to a petition to City Council. So it came in front of you as a petition, and then you routed it back to us, and then they scheduled it for a public hearing with the planning board. It has to go, it has to go through the process in that manner.
Yeah. So you may, I may not...
So it, I, I don't think the board's going to change their win, but we can take feedback from the council.
Well, you may not have the benefit of what we may or may not have.
Oh, no, you can, we can always continue the hearing and, and, and have the benefit. I sat there with, with all of them, and so did Elizabeth. So we had the benefit of sitting with them and listening to them, but I think that's an excellent point, that, that you should have them here so that you can, you can really ask, what are the enforcement issues? What would give you teeth to be able to go in and do something about this?
But I think if you do bring it, the plant, the building commissioner here, this is a separate, the separate matter that every single site plan and every single special permit that gets approved, we rely on the building commissioner. And it's not just this ordinance here. And that's, that's the, the big picture.
Well, you know, it's funny because last year, was it last year? We found a number of plans that had conditions for developments that there was never a final inspection on certain pieces to make sure those conditions were met. And like you said, maybe that's a whole separate inspection office.
Yeah, the building commissioner is aware of it, very aware. I've written many letters to the building commissioner about enforcement issues. I have four letters in July, and he has responded with some enforcement on those four items. I was waiting for an update today. I know one of the items, I can't mention it, but it made great progress after he initiated enforcement. So I know he has taken some measures to do that, but I think he has said to me that he needs another staff to do it.
I think we're getting way off top topic here. My opinion, I don't know. We, we, this, we got a petition before us that I think we probably would benefit from having the building commissioner down here to talk about, but the systemic problems of whether your conditions are being enforced by him, I think is a, a subject for another time.
I agree.
All right, let me go to the public, if I may. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 6-23? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 6-23? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 6-23? Well, we thank you both for coming down, and we will see if we can take some of the measures, partly adopt some of the measures that we discussed this evening, and keep us abreast of the vote that happens at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to your wisdom to help us through this.
Councilor...
Will we be keeping the hearing, we'll be keeping the hearing open?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, obviously, and I think one of the things we want to do is, is see if we can get the building inspector and perhaps the License Commission chair to come down here and we can have a discussion on this petition.
Would October 24th be acceptable, or do you need more time?
No, I think that would be fine as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but they're going to Legal Affairs first, if everybody's good with it. Everybody okay with that, the 24th?
I'm fine, do you have a time?
It would schedule probably a little longer.
Yeah.
Yep. I like your thought, I think definitely need that on this one.
Say 4:00.
No, thank you. I wouldn't suggest. 6:30.
Okay.
That should give us at least 15 minutes to handle it, and that should be okay. Is that too much, or?
That's fine.
That's good?
Okay.
And we can take that up and officially adopt that during the meeting, if that's okay? Since we have to vote on what to do with this during the meeting anyway. Are you all set, Mr. Chairman?
I am, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, we are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be answering or responding to any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. No one has signed up this evening, but I will ask, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I now declare the public forum closed, and we are going to move right into communications from the mayor. We have a few money orders, beginning with C-19, Madam Clerk.
Do you want the financial report first?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, okay.
C-19, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that a police donation account be established, allowing the police department to accept donations and spend funds on applicable police expenses.
And C-19 is going to be referred to the chairman of finance.
Regular course, please.
C-19 has been given regular course, C-20.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that a transfer of $203,914.30 be made from the E911 Grant Fund to the Fire Capital Project Fund to continue work on the new 911 dispatch center.
C-20 is likewise referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the agenda, regular course, please.
C-20 has been given regular course, C-21.
C-21, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of $2,500,000 that was made on June 27th, 2022, to the Fallbrook School Capital Project Fund, with the same amount being transferred from the excess and deficiency account on designated fund balance to be re-read into record in new updated language from MSBA be approved.
And C-21 is likewise referred to the chairman of finance.
Regular course, please.
C-21 has been given regular course, moving on to appointments.
Appointments, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appointment of the following individual to the Office of Counsel and Aging, term to expire 4/25/2022. Marlene Tebault, 556 Central Street, Lot 1, Lemmister, Mass.
And this appointment is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, please. Can we schedule an interview on October 24th, 2022? At 6:40? Regular course, please, and we schedule an interview on October 24th, 22, at 6:40.
Okay. And the City Clerk will schedule that interview, and this has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda. Yes, Council Brady.
On C dash 21.
Yes.
The superintendent, I had spoken with her being Chair of the school, this is time-sensitive. It's something we already voted on, but it's a boilerplate language that the state needs, and it will move up our application so we can get it into October. I don't know if that's something that can be done.
Well, we don't have, we don't, we have no other choice.
Unfortunately, we can't do it tonight, you know, obviously, and if it's, if it's like time-sensitive that we could lose money, then-
Well, I think if it-
We'd have to have a special meeting, that'd be the only way to address it sooner than October 24th.
She just said in October, so I think it might be okay.
We might be okay, as long as it's before the end of the month, we'll be okay. We'll just have to take some-
Second deadline for December.
What's that?
They have a second deadline for December.
Oh, there's a second deadline for December as well? Okay.
Then they can get this in for the first time, it'll be legally acceptable.
Okay.
Per pound council.
Okay. But yeah, it should be done by two weeks from tonight, so that, but that's good to know.
I just wanted to make her point, and because it's really just boilerplate language, and it's something we discussed, we already passed, it's just kind of cleaning up.
Okay.
They want their language written into it.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Well, I'll double-check that, make sure that we're good for October 24th. Okay, moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, 11 dash 23, Madam Clerk.
11 dash 23, David Cormier, Ward 3 Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward 2 Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, and add the following, add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel 9, at the southernmost part of the lot.
And this is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time in the calendar, regular course. Generally, I would refer this to the limits of the Police Department Traffic Division, but early this evening, we received what I thought was an extremely detailed letter lying out, I think, just about all we need to know from the police traffic on this. So I would ask for a referral from the mayor's office, and one from the Disability Commission as well, and perhaps we could establish a public hearing on October 24th at 6:45 PM.
Mr. President, would you consider, and Mr. Chair, I mean, I don't know that this is too time-sensitive this time of year, maybe we could do that in November? We're going to have a busy night on the 24th with that other petition.
I am in total agreement that we should just push this to November because of those same things that the, that the other member has mentioned, that it's, you know, not time-sensitive because of the time of year, and I can tell you that there'll be no recommendation by the 24th from the Disability Commission, because they won't be meeting again until probably about the, I don't know, 13th, 14th, or whatever it is of November, so 15th of November.
If Disability Commission isn't going to meet until then, then we would push it to the second meeting of November, because ours is the 14th?
That's fine.
So it would be 11:28, if that's acceptable?
That's fine.
At 6:50 PM?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Okay, so, November 28th, 6:50 PM. Okay, so should we take a vote to establish that public hearing? You comfortable with that? So all those in favor of establishing a public hearing on November 28th at 6:50 PM signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, that public hearing has been established. At this time, I think some of the appointees have left, but we will move it up to the front of the calendar. Any of the appointments, Madam, Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report on those?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the only one that we had here this evening was Shen Bergeron. Obviously, she came with a very high recommendation from the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Bergeron is very well-spoken, she seems like she's going to be a good fit, and made it her life's work, basically to give back to a community that was so helpful to her. So I will ask you to check with the other member of my committee, but it would be my recommendation to grant the appointment.
Counselor Deacon.
I'm in agreement with this appointment.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant, to confirm the appointment of Shen Bergeron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will do this with a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counsel Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Angelini.
Yay.
Counsel Brady.
Yay.
Counsel Deacon.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. Shen Bergeron has been confirmed to the Office of the Emergency Management, Emergency Operations. Congratulations to her. We will now go back in order, and Mr. Chairman of Finance, I know you were very eager to give your, eager to give your financial report.
Now's my time?
Now's your time.
Thank you, sir.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year with a balance in the stabilization account of $20,675,366. Since July 1st, we've added interest in the amount of $24,562, resulting in a total balance Since July 11th, we've appropriated or will appropriate, if we pass C 16, C 17, and C 18, a total of $1,905,649, which will leave a balance in the stabilization account of That's the financial report.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments for the Chairman about the financial report? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We will now move on to items under Finance, beginning with C dash 16. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash 16, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appropriation of $250,000 to the police overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Attached to the mayor's communication is a letter from Aaron Kennedy, Chief of Police. Dear Mayor, much like our last request, there are several factors contributing to unordinary high spikes in overtime demands, primarily short staffing levels, military leave, and extended injury leave has given rise to this request for $250,000 in additional emergency overtime. On the attached form, our live balance estimate is approximately $127,842. So the cover's getting bare, so to speak, as we know from the chief being down here on a number of occasions. We used to have, the debate used to be, you know, should we do it with overtime versus appointments, but now the debates switch to, we can't find live, new employees if we wanted to. So unfortunately, we're forced to use overtime, and this is just another example of it. So it'd be my position, Mr. President, to grant C 16, and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Counsel Angelini.
Let me get unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee to grant C dash 16. Is there any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash 16 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C dash 16 has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order the sum of $250,000 be appropriated to the police department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C dash 16's order has been adopted. C dash 17.
C dash 17, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $30,000 be made to the Monmouth Recovery Center, the same amount to be transferred from the opiate settlement fund. The control has sent down some information indicating that the balance in the fund currently is $57,715.15. The settlement amount for the City of Lummester is well over $1.3 million, but that gets paid in yearly installments all the way out to 2038. She's expecting in fiscal '23 to receive a total of $118,370.96. Just to sort of give you some background on this generally, this results in a national settlement between three opioid pill manufacturers of $533 million, that's Massachusetts' portion of the settlement, and cities and towns will be receiving 40% of that total settlement. The national settlement was $26 billion. So as I said, this will be paid over a period of time. To give you a little bit of a background on the recipient that the mayor's proposing for this first $30,000, we get a letter from Monmouth Recovery Foundation Corp., from a fellow named Matthew Wright, who is their president, and our director rather, and president. My name is Matthew Wright, I am the president of Monmouth Recovery Foundation Corp. MRF is the nonprofit that operates Monmouth Recovery Center. At the City Council's meeting, a mayor's communication for an appropriation of $30,000 from the opioid settlement fund to our organization to help fund our work in the community was given regular course. At tomorrow's council meeting, this appropriation will come back up again in this email, and hope to give you some information about the opioid settlement fund in our organization that may help you make informed decisions. And it goes into the numbers that I just recited for you. Massachusetts has issued guidelines as to how these funds are to be spent, only in combating the opioid epidemic and its effects. Our organization is already working on nearly all the same directives, but have only been doing so with private fundraising and the occasional generous mini-grant from area organizations such as UMass, Reliant, Haywood Hospital, and Rise of Massachusetts. As our organization is the only one in Lummester carrying out this work, this initial $30,000 will certainly help lessen our burden over the next couple of months. We are grateful for the support of our city government in caring for the wellness of the highly stigmatized community-wide population. I have attached a couple of MRC brochures, I've also CC James Adams, our treasurer. If you have any questions or would like to discuss any more detail and depth, we'd be very happy to speak to you. That's from Matthew Wright. So as you can see, there are guidelines for the use of this money, and appropriately is being used to attack the problem that gave rise to the litigation, and it would appear that this organization is an appropriate one for, to address the need in our community, and it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C 17, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Counsel Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash 17. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Brady.
Just looking at that, do we have other organizations that have put their names in the hat, so to speak?
I have no knowledge to suggest that, and from Mr. Wright's letter, I would imagine that they're not up to the same speed that his organization is in being able to, as he stated, already working within those guidelines that the recovery fund requires. It's only a fraction of the money besides, there's going to be a lot more coming, so we certainly can keep an eye on that, if there are other organizations that want to compete for the funding that can appropriately spend the money according to the guidelines. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the Ward 1 Counsel. I know also in some of the literature that they sent over that they were working with luck, and so-
They work hand-in-hand, I was just curious if this was, you know, is it a competitive, just as long as they meet the guidelines, any nonprofit can apply, I guess?
It sounded to me by the tone of the letter that they're sort of working on a boot, you know, a very small budget, so, you know, perhaps the funding, you know, start one of these organizations, the funding sources are pretty difficult, so, but like I said, something we can check on. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Hold on one moment. Seeing none, I will ask for a vote to grant C dash 17. All those in favor signify by saying, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C dash 17 has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $30,000 be appropriated to the Monmouth Recovery Center, same amount to be transferred from the opioid settlement fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the order for C 17 has been adopted. Moving on to C dash 18.
C 18, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $349,770.80 be made to the Police In-Service Reform Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding additional training needed due to police reform. And it's broken down, in-service overtime, $186,269.4, instructors overtime, $67,280.64, in-service and accreditation overtime, $52,281.12, anticipated equipment costs for training, $43,940, all necessitated as a result of police reform. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C 18, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Counsel Angelini.
I agree.
Okay. Looks like a unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee to grant C dash 18. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash 18 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C dash 18 has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $349,770.80 be transferred to the, be appropriated to the Police In-Service Reform Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the order for C dash 18 has been adopted. Moving on to six dash 23, Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Six dash 23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the planning board, requests to amend the zoning orders pertaining to the parking of underused vehicles. As you are aware, Mr. President, we had a public hearing this evening, and I think the consensus here was, see if we could summon the building inspector down, he has some questions, as well as the Chairman of the License Commission, and we continued this public hearing until October 24th, I'm sorry, yeah, October 24th at 6:30 PM. So I would be in favor of giving this further time, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, so Counsel Badanza.
I'm in favor of further time and continuing the public hearing.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, and would you also like to lump in here that we officially take a vote to ask the building commissioner to come down at the next public hearing to talk to us, address us regarding this particular issue as well?
That's a great idea.
And License Commission Chair?
And the License Commission Chair as well. Okay.
We do just have to make sure that there's not a License Commission meeting already, so we don't conflict.
If you can check into that, and if there is, Madam Clerk, then it's going to constantly conflict with our meetings. If they can send us a letter regarding this issue, that'd be good, so at least we have something.
What time did their meeting start, Bill?
Six.
They can come in before their meeting. If their meeting starts at 7, we could have them down here at 6.
They start at 6.
So 6:30, maybe we'll be lucky, and there'll be a quick meeting that night, and they can come right down here. Otherwise, they're going to have to send us a letter, because we constantly conflict with them. Right? They have Monday, they have the second Mondays, and we do too, fourth.
I have to see if they're off their summer schedule or not, because in summer, they meet once, but starting in the winter, they meet twice.
Okay.
So I can confirm.
All right. Okay, so we'll take the vote, and, you know, and that they can come down here, and if not, we'll figure something out, how to proceed. Okay, so the recommendation for six dash 23 was to give further time, continue the public hearing to October 24th at 6:30 PM, and have the building commissioner, as well as the Chairman of the License Commission, attend this public hearing as well. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, seven dash 23 has been given further time, and the public hearing has been continued, October 24th, 6:30 PM. Seven dash 23, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed. Seven- I am indeed. 7-23, Joseph A. Quinn, Sealer of Waits and Measures, request to amend the City Limits to Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, by updating the content of Article 10 Inspector of Waits and Measures. This request includes updating the ordinance and the fee schedule. Recommended ordinance and fee schedule has been approved by the mayor and has been submitted to the city council. The reason for the petition is the current ordinance is outdated and needs to be updated. The current ordinance was last updated with significant changes in 1960. The fee schedule has been, has had minor changes periodically over the years. As you know, Mr. Chairman, we conducted a public hearing this evening. Mr. Quinn was present. Did a wonderful job, I think, and was well-prepared to share what exactly is entailed being affiliated with Waits and Measures. And it would be my position that we adopt the ordinance. And I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Cormier. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 7-23. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 7-23 signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 7-23 has been granted. Moving on to 9-23.
9-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director. On behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot size requirements for a lot division in the residential A zone, a lot size, a minimum of 37,780 square feet. This is given regular course on September 26th. It's given further time. Oh, we're going to give, I'm going to propose to give it further time this evening. And we'd like to see public hearing scheduled for October 24th at 6:50 PM. So the recommendation would be further time. Public hearing scheduled for October 24th at 6:50 PM.
Okay.
You asked me to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza, are you okay with that?
Mr. President and Mr. Chairman, given the fact that the Planning Board hearing on this is not until the 7th of November, and given the fact that we haven't yet advertised for the public hearing on the 24th of October, I would suggest that we schedule a public hearing on this for November 28th, our second meeting. And that way, we may only have to do that public hearing once.
Reminder of the fact that you just said to only support that.
I think that's a good idea.
Would five-minute intervals be sufficient?
I think so.
So I would recommend 9-23 be moved to 11/28/2022 at 6:40 PM and 10/23 be moved to 11/28/2022 at 6:45 PM.
Okay. All right. So we will, Counselor Badanza, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Counselor Cormier, are you, are you good with further time and establishing that hearing?
I agree with the timing and the change in schedule.
Okay. All right. So all those, is there any further discussion on 9-23? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 9-23 further time and establishing or changing the public hearing to November 28th, 2022 at 6:40 PM signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 9-23 has indeed been given further time and we will now have the public hearing on November 28th, 2022 at 6:40 PM. Moving on to 10-23, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. President, 10-23 is Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lots with requirement for lots in the rural residential zone. Again, this was given regular course on September 26th. And I would recommend further time to the aforementioned hearing scheduled for 11/28 at 6:45 PM. And I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 10-23 further time and having a public hearing in November 28th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, this has been given further time with that hearing on November 28th, 6:45 PM. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, 8-23. Madam Chairwoman.
Mr. President, before we go to Ways and Means.
Yes.
Where is 5-23 on the agenda?
5-23?
The parking on Summer Street.
Well, maybe, maybe the hearing got on here. And that didn't get put on. Shall we, can we take, can we take action on it? Because it was on here as, it was on the agenda.
Technically, we can because it is posted legally on the agenda.
It is posted. It might not be traditional.
It's typical spot, which I do apologize for the error. But you could legally, because it is on the agenda, still take action on it without there being an open meeting law violation.
We did have the public hearing and it is already posted, the petition's posted in its entirety once on there already. It might not be on there again in its traditional spot, but it is all on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
So, okay. So that was petition.
5-23.
I'm sorry, 5-23. And that is a legal affairs petition?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you want to report on that as well?
5-23, David Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the revised ordinance entitled Handicap Parking Spaces and add the following. Two reserved spaces on Summer Street closest to the entrance to Powder Park opposite 60 Summer Street. This was given regular course about the September 12th. Further time, on September 26th, we conducted a public hearing on the 26th and conducted a continued public hearing this evening. In light of the fact that another petition has been introduced and is going to address this, it would be my position that this petition be given leave to withdraw without prejudice. And I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor of that.
And Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give 5-23 leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 5-23 has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to 8-23. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have reviewed the election order for November 8th of 2022. And I am not going to read these. Madam Clerk, these are posted as required and they are both in English and in Spanish. They are available in the clerk's office and they are going to be posted at all our polling sites. So the, Mr. President, I, it would be my recommendation that we agree to sign the election orders.
Okay. And I will check with Counselor Deacon as well.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant 8-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 8-23 signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 8-23 has been granted. Moving on to, we have some additional appointments under Ways and Means. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We had two additional interviews scheduled for this evening, Josh Bowdrich and Stephanie Quinlan. We were made aware that they were taking part in a meeting this evening. So I would ask that we continue those interviews and we send out an invitation to have them continue, come in for an interview on October 24th, if that's okay, 6:50, 6:45 PM.
Okay. And Madam Clerk will set that up. Counselor Frida.
I don't have a copy of that letter that you said was sent, but I'm going to assume that they were appointed for 60 days on a temporary basis.
They were, yes. I can get you a copy of that.
So why would we be interviewing them now?
Because this would be their permanent appointment. And a temporary appointment, it's only good for 60 days.
No, because he may not send it down as a personal, as a permanent. I mean, we don't know. I mean, I don't think we should be interviewing.
So the original intent was to put them as permanent? And then they end up losing more members than they expected to? And then they went this way so they would have enough quorum so they wouldn't have to be rescheduled public hearings?
There's a real issue with the Conservation Commission. This was an important interview. This was, this was something that we should have had an opportunity to talk. That's why they, they're short. There's been ongoing issues with that commission for a number of years now. I'm not sure we should be interviewing them. That's just my opinion.
Through the President?
60 days they're going to be in.
Through the President?
Yes, Counselor Badanza.
To the Counselor Large, I understand your concerns, but he did, the mayor did send them down as a permanent appointment. It is on our calendar. I think it's our obligation to process it.
No, not when there's a 60-day appointment.
Well, we don't have any control over that. All we have is what's...
Right. So we couldn't, we can interview them and not like them in the interview, and we can't do anything about it.
Well, we can't, we could not, we could not appoint them, but then they're just temporary.
There's no point in interviewing them, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, I respectfully, through the President, I respectfully disagree. I think we should process the, what he sat down.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none. We will give this vote a further time. All those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, six to one. These have been given further time. And the other appointment, Madam Chairwoman.
I would ask that this matter be, that interview be continued as well. Cancelled that?
Okay, I'm sorry. Which one?
For Noel.
Noel Bouloudis?
So we found out that she is considered a reappointment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we can cancel her interview?
Okay.
Because we researched it back with the mayor's office to ensure.
Okay. So are we voting this evening to, do we have to reappoint her?
Yes.
So then it would be my position that we reappoint Ms. Bouloudis to the Office of the Disability Commission.
Okay. Counselor Deacon, so that's a unanimous recommendation then that we confirm the reappointment of Noel Bouloudis? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the reappointment signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, Noel Bouloudis has been reconfirmed to the Office of the Disability Commission. Moving on to new business, we have a first reading of an ordinance. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am indeed. As you stated, this is a first reading of the ordinance, C-13. In the year 2022, an ordinance be ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Chapter 16, Section 16-30 of the revised ordinances entitled Compensation Grades is hereby amended by inserting the following into the appropriate subsections for police, fire, dispatch, in Schedule W, employees, as follows. Then of course accompanying is the schedule that's available for review in clerk's office. It would be my position that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance. And I would ask you to check with members of the Legal Affairs Committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I am in accord.
And Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, which was formally petitioned, C-13. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Angellini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of seven to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Is there any other new business to come before the city council? Seeing none, is there any old business to come before the city council? Seeing none, is there anything to come into the community calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Cormier, and is a motion and Counselor Frida is, I'm sorry?
I thought you were going to go to some new business. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to request that the Chair of the Committee on Schools, which I also sit on, request that the superintendent and a member of the school committee, if she wants them, to just get an update on school issues, you know, with the, not to talk about contract negotiations, but just the paraprofessionals and some of the money that they have left over from the APA funding. And also the, the numbers are beginning of October to see what our school population looks like. So just to get some general updates on, on the school.
Okay. Counselor Brady would...
Yeah, I would, I agree with that. There's ongoing negotiations with the paraprofessionals. And I know they're scheduled October 27th. I believe our next meeting is on the 24th. So if we just bring them down, superintendent and any other member, they're not going to be able to talk about the negotiations at that time. But we could ask the other questions.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not looking to, to get involved in the discussion. I just want to talk about paraprofessionals in general and, and some of the other unions. That's all.
Through the President, how are we going to discuss paraprofessionals at all in the middle of negotiations with them? That seems disingenuous to me.
That's what I mentioned, that, you know. We, you know, we could ask about the APA funds and all that, but...
Yeah, there's probably a whole host of things we could ask about, but I would prefer that we give the superintendent some notice of what exactly we want to discuss specifically. Unless we're prepared to do that tonight, I'm not prepared to vote on that.
Unless Counselor Brady, just a suggestion?
We'll do a subcommittee and then I can get back to you.
That makes sense.
I was going to say if you maybe want, on an off night, have a subcommittee meeting and, you know, put together a whole list of questions and, you know, so that they can come down here, you know, prepared and know in advance what they can and can't talk about and have all kinds of numbers crunched and so that we don't leave here with more questions than answers if we just have a meeting and not really give them the nature of what we want from them.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Counselor Frida.
We've had every subcommittee meeting before our council meetings. I don't think we've had any off night other than the budget. I don't, I'm not looking to interfere with the negotiations. I don't look, we as the Committee on Schools have the right to have the superintendent or the school committee come down. The numbers on, on school population come out at the beginning of October. We have not had the superintendent down. That's part of the sub, the Subcommittee of, Committee on Schools. I don't know why we have to have a separate night of a subcommittee meeting when everybody else can have it before the meeting. I mean...
I mean, you can do it in November.
Clearly, it's an issue.
Or you can do it in November prior to our first meeting in, you know, at 6 o'clock. We'll all be here anyway.
You know, never mind. I'll take that back. I'll find out on my own. That's, you can do what you want, Mr. Chairman. That's fine.
No one's stopping you from scheduling a subcommittee meeting. It's, it's...
Clearly, that's...
It's the chairman's committee. He can schedule it anytime he wants. He can contact the clerk and schedule it with any reasonable period of time he wants.
So I just said, he could do what he wanted. And I think that's what I just said.
I agree. 100%. You're right. You're right.
I just find it odd that it's, there's an objection to the one thing that, that we talked about for Committee on Schools. Is there an objection anywhere?
I have, I have a cautionary concern about talking about paraprofessionals. That was the word used.
That's exactly what I...
Whilst there are negotiations going on with paraprofessionals in this body. It's not part of our purview. I just want to make sure that we're careful. That's all.
I sat on the school committee for six years. I'm well aware of the contract negotiations, paraprofessionals, and anything else that has anything to do with the school committee and negotiation.
And I sat, and I sat as a city solicitor for four years and shared office space with a guy who represented the city in labor matters for over 20. So I'm well aware as well.
Is there anything else that come under the community calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Counsel Cormier, do we have a second? Counsel Angelini, all those in favor of adjournment signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, we are now adjourned.